Katie, you all set?
I was just gonna let you know the quorum's now locked on.
Yeah, we have, we have a quorum. Katie, you all set?
I just need one second.
You good to go, Katie?
Recording in progress.
We are good to go.
Great. Good evening. My name is Peter Basserman and I'm chairman of Branford's Inland Wetland and Water Course Commission. It is July 24th. It is now seven o'clock in the evening. This meeting will be conducted using the Zoom platform. It is being held in accordance with Connecticut Public Act 22-3 and the Town of Branford regulations for the inland wetland and water courses. Documents referenced this evening are on the town's website, the agency's webpage, and at the town hall. Final agenda for tonight's meeting was filed on the 22nd of July and is also on the website. Any changes to that agenda this evening, staff?
No changes.
Branford Community Television is recording and broadcasting tonight's meeting. Thankful for their time and effort providing the community the opportunity to view this meeting at their leisure. For those speaking at this evening's proceeding, please make sure that the camera is positioned so that we can see your face as you're speaking. To ensure an accurate record for tonight's proceeding, when you're making a statement or comment, please note your name before articulating any comment. This applies to any party wishing to participate. You can use the raise your hand feature of the Zoom software platform to indicate a desire to speak. And I will, as well as staff, try to be conscious of the raise your hand indicator. Any additional comments from wetland staff this evening regarding process or procedure?
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I'll just let the commission and attendees know. I am still in the process of recovering from corrective eye surgery. So I'm gonna let Katie pull up documents when appropriate unless presenters want to pull up documents. I just request that if presenters are screen sharing, they only share things that have been submitted or if it's something new that they email it to Katie and/or myself.
Okay, we'll now take our customary roll call when I announce your name as commissioner. Please indicate by replying with the word present. Commissioner Begum.
Mr. Begum, I'm present.
Commissioner Gokowski.
Commissioner Gokowski, present.
Commissioner Papantonis.
Commissioner Papantonis, present.
And just in time, Commissioner Boda.
Commissioner Boda, present. I'm on my own personal hotspot, so fingers crossed. I don't know.
And as I understand, this may be the long-distance Zoom record for Branford, but be that as it may. We have a quorum. All commissioners seated may vote this evening. Is there any commissioner who feels that they need to recuse themselves from any of the proceedings this evening? Great. First up is the approval of minutes. We have a revised set of minutes from June 26th, first on the agenda.
This is Commissioner Begum. I'll make a motion that we approve the revised minutes from the June 26, 2025 regular meeting.
This is Commissioner Gokowski. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next up, we have the July 10th meeting for the minutes. Again, is there a motion to approve the July 10 regular meeting minutes?
This is Commissioner Begum. I'll make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes from July 10, 2025.
And I can almost hear the second out here.
This is Commissioner Gokowski. I'll second that.
Great. Any further discussion? Any revisions to those minutes? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we have no applications for review this evening. And we have two applications for receipt. Generally, we don't do any, don't have any action in terms of votes on applications for receipt. But I believe staff has recommended that we have a brief discussion on both these applications this evening. So we have inland wetland 250702, 12 Highland Avenue. B11, A11, 123. 1123, restoration of a small inland wetland area and yard improvements. Jamie, can you tee this up for us?
Sure. Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent. So this application was received more than a week prior to the meeting. So by the commission's kind of updated criteria, it is something that, you know, preliminary review can be done and I think is appropriate particularly given the scenario. So there has been some activity on site already. I've met with the property owner to discuss kind of what needs to be reviewed. And I definitely think some of the activities fall within potentially jurisdictional ruling as of right. So I think as part of the review, the commission might want to distinguish whether any activities are as of right and as such not subject to the permit. But there has already been some activity as far as bringing in some topsoil and establishing some, some grass, which I think has expanded from previous areas, but at the same time, they're looking to enhance the existing wetland area. So unless there's any questions from the commissioners on that, I would hand it over to the applicant to give a brief presentation. And I'm not seeing any, oh.
This is Commissioner Begum. I just, my name is mentioned in this application because of a conversation where the property owner and his daughter, or his daughter really, and I, Yingho, was here. You know, if they were going to be doing any work, they needed to get in contact with inland wetlands. I'm not part of this project. I'm not involved in any way. So I wanted to make sure the commission knows that. I'm not recusing myself from this, but I'm a neighbor and I'm on the commission.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, thank you for providing that context for commissioners. So I guess I would hand it over to the applicant and just suggest that if there's any materials that you would like screen shared to let us know and Katie will pull those up from the Dropbox.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you so much to the Inland Wetland Commission. My name is Yingho and I've spoken in front of the commission about four years ago for a restoration project of Rockland Pond, which by the way, I wanted everyone to know, we've completed that restoration and it has been donated to the Branford Land Trust. And if you have a moment to come by, please do. It's really beautiful and it has become a really wonderful working seasonal wetlands where it's filled in with, with plants in the summer and then it basically looks like a pond in the winter. And we have a small group of neighbors who we call ourselves the Friends of Rockland Pond and we basically take care of it during, throughout the year on behalf of the Branford Land Trust and this Short Beach Civic Association. Anyway, I just wanted to put that aside. Just wanted you to know who I was. And tonight, though, I am speaking on behalf of 12 Highland Avenue. The property is owned by my father and by me. And it is, but it's my father's primary residence. It's my parents' primary residence. In the back of the property, there is a very small wetlands. And so small that it's about 35 feet at the furthest and then maybe like 12 feet at the narrowest point. I think Katie, I think if you want, I can pull up the, the map just to kind of give you a sense of what it looks like.
You should be able to screen share if you would like.
Okay. I actually have the photos pulled up that you had. Oh, you do. You do. All right. Never mind. Then I will pull, I will stop sharing and I will let you share photos. I'm sorry about that. No, no, no. Don't, don't apologize. It's fine. So just to explain, so behind my fa, my father's, and I'll just call it my father's, even though I also am an owner of this property. In the backyard, there is a very small wetlands. It's a little bit of a depression and there's, we had a soil scientist. We had Matt Davison from Davison Environmental come out and sort of measure it. This is the, and sample the soil. This will be the second time that the soil has been sampled. The last time it was done was over 20 years ago and it was, the size of the wetlands has gotten a little bit larger over time. Part of that has come from the fact that the water in that area has sort of increased. There have been some trees that have been taken down. Basically, the water had no place else to go because it is the lowest point in this backyard. But it is an interesting little, small wetlands with a lot of wetland plants. There are about 55 different species of plants in there. A number of them are invasive, but a number of them are wetland plants. And my father has been wanting for a long time to turn the backyard into a garden. The first step that had happened was there were a number of trees that had been cut down in a resident property and the water line started to go a little bit closer to the house. The first thing we did, or the first thing my father did was to plant some grass, did not actually touch the wetland area that was actually confirmed by Davison Environmental. And that was just a bit of grass coming from the house out to just sort of just about within 10 feet of the wetlands itself. And then we decided that we were going to move in a direction where we wanted to turn it into more of a wetlands garden. So the idea was that we could outline the garden area, which was basically the edges of the wetlands. Sort of put around there some wetland type of plants that would be, that would serve as sort of the margin. And use like everything from like milkweed and a number of other plants that could work on the margins. Then fill the inside with flowering type of wetland plants so that in some sense it becomes a natural wetlands garden. So it's not too dissimilar to the fact that something kind of already happened on its own inside of the Rockland Pond. Only this one would be a little bit more deliberate. We'd be putting in irises. We'd be putting in other sort of plants that are in the planting plan that has been submitted to the inland wetland commission that was recommended by the botanist that was with Davison Environmental. So all of these are wetland plants. And in doing so, we've almost created a delineated type of garden. There were a number of invasives to the south of the, of the, of the wetlands. And so what we wanted to do is before the, when the weather was still cool in the spring, we wanted to at least get rid of those invasives. So we had those invasives hand-pulled. We did not, you know, put any kind of herbicide or anything in there. They were literally hand-pulled by our gardener. And then what we did was because we were a little fearful of erosion, we put the tiniest like top layer of topsoil. So I will sort of confirm there was a little bit of topsoil put on there just to hold down some grass seed. And in essence, basically kind of keep that area clear of the invasives. And so now at this point, we don't really have too many invasives. And so we are now coming to the commission with this application with the hopes that we can go forward with a planting plan in which we will turn this into like a delineated wetlands garden, but at the same time, it can still function as a wetlands. It doesn't really support too much because it's a very small wetlands, but it does still support, you know, some wildlife and some, and some small mammals. And we think that by doing this, we will actually not only make it really beautiful, but we will also make it very easy to see. And I think that that's important so that people have a good sense of what a wetlands can look like inside of a garden can look like inside of a small area. And it is a very small area. One other thing I just wanted to mention, my father wanted me to mention that the rationale for why we even were going to do anything because the previous owner actually just didn't do anything with this space, I think just let it sort of remain a sort of a wild wetlands is because my parents or my, my father is an avid gardener and my mother used to be an avid gardener, but she had a stroke about five years ago. But the one thing that she really loves are flowers. And so my father was hoping that at the same time, be able to plant kind of a garden for her. So this is kind of our way of kind of doing two things. One, we would be trying to restore this wetlands by turning it into a natural wetlands garden. And at the same time, we believe that will actually bring not just pleasure to my mother, but to all the neighbors who actually look on to this particular property. There are, we have five neighbors that are adjacent to the, to the property and have the ability to have a pretty clear line of sight. Anyway, so that, that's, that's what this is, that's what our application is for. I don't know if you want to, Katie, if you can sort of showcase, I think there's a map in the Davison Environmental. Oh, you can sort of see, this is in the winter. You can see there's a lot of water that fills up in the space. So it does have a little bit more expansive look and you can see how it kind of can run in a lot of directions. And then I think toward the very end of this application, there is Davison Environmental also provided us a little map that sort of shows the wetlands itself.
I think it might be document number two, Katie.
Yeah. So if you go a little, if you start to scroll, and in here, it also describes all of the plants that are currently there. And you can see the photos are very similar. This was taken in May of 29th in the soil. But what I'd like everyone to be able to see is go a little bit further from this map. It's the map underneath this where, yes, where you can sort of see that this is kind of the wetlands itself. The house is up here to the, right to the, I guess you would say sort of to the west of it. Or I guess more, more to the east. And you can see that the yard is pretty large and the wetlands itself does take up a portion of it. But you know, if we, if you can see the borders of it and consider the fact that we can plant plants around the borders and actually plants on the inside, we'll, we'll end up with a really lovely wetlands garden as well. Anyway, I don't know if there are any questions, but thank you so much for giving me the chance to present this.
This is Commissioner Basserman. I looked at the application and there's, you know, quite a bit of detail regarding the soil and the proposed plantings. Who actually will do the work?
So Davison Environmental employs a botanist, Aubrey, who, Kerogen, who actually has worked, worked with us on the restoration of Rockland Pond. And so she will actually be working with us and then my gardener will work with her. So that's how we're doing this. So she will be under her supervision. And she's procuring for us all of the plants that are listed in the table that's at the end of the application. With, and there are quantity numbers next to them as well. They look about 18 to 20 at a time. I think if you go, Katie, if you could drop down a little further, I think you'll be able to see like these are some of the flowers that we, or some of the plants that we're looking at right now. And then the numbers actually are in a different table. I apologize that they're in a separate table, but they are in the table here. I think it might be a little up. Oh, or further down, actually. Let me see if I can find it too. That should be it. Yeah, there we go.
This is Commissioner Basserman. And the, and the funding for this is provided how?
It's purely provided by my father and me. So this is something we will privately be paying. We are, just like as we privately paid for Davison to do.
This is Commissioner Gokowski. I, I think it's great what you're doing. I, you know, I, I understand your rationale. My concern is in the wintertime, when I saw the flooding on the property in that area, are you concerned that those plants are going to die off from having too much saturation? Or any concern in that way?
So one of the things that we have begun to do on the edges of the property is that we have planted a row of arborvitae's and they're, and our, our neighbors have also planted a row of arborvitae. I, I think what we're trying to do is sort of use trees on the borders of the property to help us with some of the absorption with the water, because I agree there is a bit of water there. And this is one of the things that we've been discussing with the botanist, which is like what kind of plants can thrive in, in the, you know, in maybe a more saturated environment.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Basserman. Jamie, you, you mentioned that this might be considered an as of right.
Yeah, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent. When I first reviewed the activity with the property owners, I was thinking it might be a jurisdictional as of right ruling and, and then I kind of got a little bit concerned with the introduction of topsoil. I understand it's a very small amount and it certainly doesn't look like the site was, you know, filled by any means. And Davison Environmental's report touches on the recent placement of the topsoil and establishment of the grass in his report in that he doesn't believe it had any impact directly to the wetland. But what I met with her, or with both of the property owners out on site, I suggested that an application might be the right way to move forward in case some of the activities were. You know, the establishment of lawn, generally speaking, is not considered as of right, but the plant, native plantings in the wetland area itself, that very well could be something the commission finds as, as of right. They're also proposing a minor stepping stone walkway outside of the wetland. So again, the commission has the option of deciding whether any of this or all of it's as of right. And maybe the activities that you find are not as of right or something you think's de minimis enough that it could be reviewed by staff, assuming that the activities that you determine not to be as of right are all located outside of the wetland. So if anyone wants clarification on that, let me know. Otherwise I'll let others weigh in.
This is Commissioner Begum. So the planting is going to be in that map that had the red and the green. The inner straighter lines are the actual wetland and then that, that next ring is not wetland and that's where the plants are gonna go.
Right. So the plants will border, will, will go the entire delineation and, and also within, right? So we'll use wetland plants on all sides, but it'll at least make it very, very clear. We'll just put more kind of like shrub-like plants on the outside. So we really truly delineate it almost like a, like a green border, but the border itself is really wetland plants. And it'll also make it easier to see, to be honest. It'll make it very clear where the wetlands are.
Commissioner Begum. So Jamie, tell me more, and just in terms of trying to figure out whether this is as of right or needs an application. As of right is, any planting within that red zone, but in the green would have to be application?
So of course I don't have my regulations quick to access on this computer. But as of right would be, if you bear with me, I'll pull it up real quick. Of course, we also have a new website in case anyone hasn't checked it out. Feel free. So as a right is per section four of the regulations as, as outlined in state statutes. So I think the section it could fall under would be conservation of soil, water, fish, shellfish and wildlife. Given that the project's scope is removal of invasives, which has already happened at this point, and then replanting with natives, with the exception of the lawn area and the, the walking trail. The other thing I'll point out is there was an existing drain. I believe it's like a, I'm not sure what kind of drain it is, if it's a footing drain or sump pump, but there's an existing drain on site that is, my understanding was cleaned out. And that is shown on the site plan. And so to that end, there's also as of right as far as maintaining maintenance relating to any drainage pipe which was existing before effective date. So I mean, maintenance of an existing pipe generally has been considered as of right. So I just wanted to point that out in case anyone's looking at that on the site plan. That is not a new drain. It was, my understanding was existing and they were repairing it because it got crushed.
That's correct.
This is Commissioner Basserman. The, the topsoil, as noted in the report and as we also heard in a application recently. where material was added in the wetland to enhance the growth of the plants that are being put in the, um, in the wetland. Um, I, I guess I'm less concerned about that. Can you say more about the lawn area?
Uh, Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, just to clarify, I, my understanding that no topsoil was introduced to the wetland. It was just in the outside areas, um, where lawn seed was spread. Property owner has anything to clarify or correct there, feel free.
No, that's correct. We've not put anything into the wetlands area. The lawn is really skirts on the outside and, uh, of the, uh, wetland space and, um, and, and in some sense almost serves as a, uh, um, an absorptive material for any of the water that comes. But we were very careful and the fact that we delineated out the wetlands made it very easy. We, we have flags, about twelve flags that are, um, pink flags that are put there. That makes it very clear. And that gives us also a knowledge of how far to go. So, um, but we, we aren't doing anything more than what is already, what we've already done.
This is Commissioner Boda. Um, does the interior of the wetland dry out, uh, um, in the summer?
Yeah, it's, it looks, it's, it's kind of just a little bit moist, barely moist, actually. It's pretty dry in this, in the summer and then really what the, some of those pictures that are in the application were taken in the winter. So as to give you kind of a contrast of when it's at the maximum amount of water and then, you know, right now in the summer and even those photos, um, at the end of May, um, showed very, very, just very moist soil and now it's dry.
So following up, this is Commissioner Boda, then would the intention be that, um, to prevent any wood even vegetation from, um, growing in the interior of the, the wetland and in favor of, um, emergent vegetation?
Yeah, I, I mean, our goal is we'll, we'll kind of try and keep track of like invasives in the area and then leave whatever natives grow in the space. I, I think that's a little bit of our, our, our plan. Um, and that way we kind of keep the wetlands itself very native and also at the same time, you know, just ensure that it doesn't get choked off either. It is under a, a shade. There are a couple maple trees above it. Um, so there's, it's a rather shady kind of an area. Um, we may prune back a few of the, uh, lower branches to give it a little more sunlight, but otherwise, um, we're not planning on doing very much at all. And I don't know if that answered your question.
Um, I think that was sort of at the heart of my question is, um, those maples, if another maple or two sprouts up, is the, the goal to keep it as, um, flowering plants versus additional maples?
Yeah, we would want to keep it as flowering plants and we can always transplant the maples elsewhere. Um, especially when they're, when they're young, they're easy to do that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
This is Commissioner Bergman. Speaking of trees, I think there was mention in the application about cherry, there's a cherry tree that might get cut down and so, it, just in terms of whether it's an application or as a right, I don't know where the cherry tree is, where it falls in the green or the red and so.
The cherry tree falls right on the, right on the edge of the green red. So it's technically would be in wetlands and it's kind of a, kind of have a pain in that respect. But, um, but, um, Davidson Environmental suggested we take it out. Just, just take that. And it's a very skinny little, um, uh, cherry tree. It's not very, very large. It's, you know, maybe at most, you know, about seven, eight inches in diameter. So we're not talking very big.
So again, Commissioner Bergman, so Jamie, does that fall within as a right or is that? I don't know what the, you know, at some point we need to decide whether it's beneficial to have an application.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent. I, I read the report when it was submitted. I have not reread it recently due to circumstances. Um, if you could remind me, is the cherry tree a native cherry tree? Or is it an ornamental cherry tree? And is it supposed to be removed for, for sunlight purposes or a different reason?
Um, uh, Davidson Environmental suggested that we remove it, um, more for sunlight reasons. And also, um, I don't believe it's a, it's a native, um, tree either. So I think it was kind of one of these things where it was like, it's not really helping us. We might as well take it out. That was the recommendation. Um, I think it's written in here.
This is Commissioner Bergman. I think he mentioned that there are a lot of little cherry trees coming up from it.
Oh, that was probably our native. Some native species present while beneficial to the broader ecosystem may need to be managed to prevent them from taking over particularly when plantings are new. That's not where they mentioned the cherry trees, but.
Yeah, let me see if I can find where.
But I think that was, the, the point of that, just to kind of speak to that for the commissioners, I think is to increase the biodiversity, which is good not only for the visual aesthetics, but, um, to have more species is beneficial for it.
Commissioner Bergman, it's right there. It was on page three. If you go scroll down a little.
The last sentence before the proposed planting schedule.
Yeah.
It, it says that, you know, mature trees shall be retained with the exception of the mature sweet cherry tree due to abundance of seedlings present on site. Removal of this tree will also increase the success of the wetland planting by allowing more sunlight to reach the planting site.
It was on page four.
Which will increase, top of, top of page four.
Yeah, so it sounds like it's proposing removal of the, the young tree, but leaving the saplings so that they'll grow after the proposed plantings are able to establish?
Yes, to sort of give them a chance, the, the new plantings a chance.
Uh, Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, not that I want to stop the commission if you're ready to make a decision. Um, but I'll also note that you can, you do have time if you want to continue this discussion and not make a decision tonight and digest some of the information. Um, you know, I'm sure the owner would like to only attend one meeting if necessary, but at the same time, I'm sure they're not planning on planting between now and the next meeting, given, you know, the heat of the summer.
Jamie, this is Commissioner Goklowski. Um, based on the property owner's, um, recent performance on that inland wetland area and her extensive research on putting this information together, I, I personally don't see an issue that we can't move forward. Um, so they can take advantage of whatever planting season is left for them to do what they can do.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent. Yeah, I, I definitely think that the application, the materials submitted with the application are very helpful and outline not only what they want to do, but the intent behind it, which is great. I just feel like I have to point out, applications are reviewed based on the merit of the application itself and not the individual submitting the application. Applications do run with the land and, um, you know, it, it, yeah, just want to throw that out there.
Commissioner.
Just as a general reminder.
Yeah, but in this particular case, the application was not only submitted, but it was also followed up with all the proper documentation that we do, would need to make a decision.
This is Commissioner Basserman. I guess that the only issue for me is, you know, certainly you could look at the merits of the application and to move forward. The, the, the issue on the as of right is consistency, uh, with, uh, when we determine that something is an as of right. And certainly, uh, uh, there's elements of this that I, I would lean toward that as an as of right condition. Uh, whether, whether the lawn, uh, requires special treatment, I, I guess is the only thing that, um, I'm rattling around in my head.
Commissioner Boda, can you say the, the last part? Can you repeat your, the last piece of what you said? Um, because it seems like we're leaning toward as of right and I, I'm not a hundred percent sure where we would not, based on the, the kind of work that's happening.
I, it, it looks to me like it, I, I think from what I remember of the last time we looked at as of right, that the, uh, work regarding removal of the invasives and putting in, um, wetland plants, uh, would be something, uh, that we would consider an as of right. But I guess the lawn area, um, uh, may not be part and parcel of what you needed to do in order to make the, um, wetland enhancement, uh, happen. And so that, I, I guess is the part that I am struggling with from a consistency standpoint. I don't know if that clears it up or not, but.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Boda. What, what is, so the, the additional piece that's in the lawn would be the walkway? Like a footpath?
That's what it sounds like, yeah.
Is there anything beyond the footpath?
Uh, Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent. So, um, it's my understanding and looking at, a- again, I don't know the exact timeline of when things happen, but it's my understanding that as part of the process of removing the invasives, which has already occurred to so, to some extent, um, that the areas that were disturbed from the hand pulling were stabilized with a small layer of topsoil and grass, uh, seed. So that areas are stabilized. They have become grass. Um, but there is a, a wider, it's not, it's not a huge expanse. It is a small property and it is all outside of the wetland as determined by Davidson Environmental, but there was an increase in the amount of lawn on the property. So.
This is Commissioner Basserman. Jamie, could that have been left, you know, ungrasped?
I mean, Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent. I, I, I only have photos of what the site looked like back in two thousand and nine, which is a significant amount of time ago. Um, and then also, you know, conversations that I've had with the property owners where they've acknowledged that they put down some grass seed. So to what extent, if I were to ask me to estimate the area, I wouldn't be able to. Maybe the property owner could. Um, but there is definitely a little bit more lawn back there than there used to be.
Yeah, I, I guess my, my thinking is if there was not seed added, would that ultimately have undermined the work that they were trying to do in the wetland?
Uh, Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, I mean, again, all of that activity was outside of the wetland. Um, I mean, I arguably, in an ideal case, the commission would want to see a conservation mix, but I understand, you know, that there's a, a balance, um, of, i- i- and I, I wasn't sure. I figured it would be better to start the time clock and have this application submitted in case the commission determined that that was a regulated activity. Um, the application that has been submitted to date is currently a de minimis application, um, meaning they've paid the minimum application fee and theoretically, any activities outside of the wetland could be approved administratively, um, which would keep the ball, the clock going or you keep things moving for the property owners. Alternatively, if the commission determines that it's a hundred percent as of right, I would recommend the property owners withdraw their application and give them the circumstances, uh, a full refund of the application fee would be granted.
Um, so this is Commissioner Boda. I, I, from the information that we have, that I have so far, I, I would say that the work in the wetland would fall under four point two A and, um, as in non-regulated as of right use and that the, the walkway would be a de minimis activity, um, that could be managed, um, by staff. So I don't know if folks are on the same page, um, and we can move forward with that or there's, somebody else has a different idea?
This is Commissioner Goklowski. I think that's a good idea.
This is Commissioner Patantonis. I agree with that.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Basserman. I'm satisfied with that.
Commissioner Bergman, me too.
Okay, um, but then I will, let me find the number. I will make a motion that inland wetland twenty five oh seven oh two, this is Commissioner Boda, um, twelve Highland Ave, application, um, be determined to include an as of right activity for the wetland plantings, um, under our regulations four point two A, um, as the applicant, um, engages in this, these things as listed in the planting schedule. Um, and that the, any walkway, any additional work that is happening outside of the wetland that is not planting, as described currently, be identified as a de minimis activity, which can be handled, um, by town staff.
I'll second that. This is Commissioner Basserman. Any further discussion? On that motion by Commissioner Boda, you're gonna vote, Commissioner Bergman?
Commissioner Bergman, aye.
Commissioner Patantonis?
Sorry, I'm having computer issues. Commissioner Patantonis, aye.
Commissioner Goklowski?
Commissioner Goklowski, aye.
Commissioner Boda?
Commissioner Boda, aye.
Commissioner Basserman, aye. I, uh, I thank you for your, your interest and your diligence and, uh, your action plan. Um, uh, good luck with, uh, this project. Uh, hope it turns out as well as, um, your prior one.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time this evening and, uh, invite the commission to come see the, the garden when it's done next year, when it comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up in the wetland twenty five oh seven oh four, one fourteen Clark Avenue, uh, landscaping, retaining wall and plantings. Again, this is an application for receipt. Uh, Jamie, did we get this one more than a week in advance or is there a different condition here?
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, yes, we received this a week in advance. Um, this application is received after the fact in response to a notice of violation. Um, so in case that triggers any, uh, memories for commissioners, I believe the property owner and her engineer are present this evening to give a, an overview and, um, make sure that they're, they're keeping the process moving for themselves as well.
This is Commissioner Basserman. Jamie, when was the NOV issued?
Um, I do not recall off the top of my head and unfortunately I'm not at my desktop. Um, but they, they, during the NOV discussion, it was discussed having the application submitted for this meeting if possible and the property owner was able to make that work. So, um,
I believe, I, I believe it was May when it was issued.
Thank you, Katie. Before is yours.
All right, uh, my name's Ryan Thompson. I'm an engineer and a land surveyor and I'm working with, uh, Rose two four on this property. Um, I'm going to, it's okay if I share my screen or, uh?
Yes.
Okay, let me share my screen. If I can find the share button. Share, there is, okay. All right. Okay, so.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, we just asked that you only share things that are part of the record or if you're introducing something new, to email it to Katie or myself.
No, this is the stuff that was delivered last week. Um, all right, so I just want, so, um, I was, I was hired specifically because I guess it, the, at the meeting in, um, it was, uh, May, uh, May twenty second, I believe, uh, or thereabouts. Um, Ms. Dufour was, uh, advised by this, it commissioned, um, that an application would be, need to be submitted with, um, a survey, um, showing the, the improvements that were done as part of the violation and, um, a, uh, information that, uh, and um a uh information that regarding what material was placed and 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 very, what all the things that were done, et cetera, on the survey. Uh and then an engineer uh needed to assess the change in conditions uh from an improved site development plan that had been submitted e uh quite a bit earlier as part of the building of the house um versus what was actually constructed. And then um the structural integrity of a retaining wall, uh masonry retaining wall. So what I'll do is I'll start with just an overview of the of this of the survey. So I did conduct a survey um uh and this is the area in question, this is this is.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I don't think we're seeing the the site plan, the survey. If you're screen sharing. I don't think you're screen sharing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go, that looks promising.
Okay, do you see the survey now?
We do.
Okay, all right, sorry about that. I thought I hit the share button, I did not. So now I did. Okay, so this so this this is the entire, the entire property. Um here, this is Clark Avenue down here on east, southeast. Uh and then this is the wetland, it was actually just discussed in the previous application, so it's actually this Ms. Dufour is a neighbor to the previous applicant. Uh so that's the exact same uh wetland that was just previously discussed. Um and then the violation was in regards to uh some plantings uh which involves a couple of cedar trees uh here. Um some arbor, some arborvitae's here. This retaining wall, this is the masonry retaining wall that was asked to be uh evaluated. Um and then the associated masonry stairs here. And then these raised masonry planters in the garden. Uh and then this this line indicates the location of the disturbance um where behind this retaining wall, there was a perforated PVC pipe placed in there and some gravel fill material. Uh so this is, this is the the area that is in 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 question regarding the um uh the violation. Um so now that you've kind of seen that, I'm gonna go over to the the report and address the specific things that that Ms. Dufour was asked by this commission and that I that I was uh retained to do. Uh so I did conduct a survey. Um um here's the the general time and everything, I did that in June seventeenth, um approximately ten AM, blah blah blah. Uh and I just wanted to note um a couple of things. One, the most notable significant rainfall prior to that, um I wanted to make sure I accounted for that or looked looked into that was about two and a half weeks or so, or maybe three weeks earlier, May twenty first to twenty fourth, where there was about five to seven inches total. Uh there were some smaller rainfall events that happened after that, but they were quarter inch or or a half inch max. Um so when I was there, there was, the the ground was pretty much dry, there was no standing water and, you know, no evidence of any erosion or excessive runoff. So I had a conversation with Ms. Dufour on site. She advised me that the various things that we just discussed on the map were built in phases over roughly a a year, um starting in the summer of two thousand and twenty-three around June. Uh and that was the construction of the masonry retaining wall and then the pipe and the gravel backfill, and then later that summer, early, right before fall, uh planting of the arborvitae's and the cedar trees, and then the next year, construction of the raised landscape planters uh on top of the backfill. So that's the the general timeline of the events. And this, I I I understand is what uh the previous applicant was referring to, I believe, with the increase in runoff. And was one of the reasons why the violation was brought up and the, you know, the the need to uh to look into the the runoff. I want to talk a little bit about the the masonry retaining wall. Um so I did, I did evaluate it in from a structural standpoint, and while I am a civil engineer and a land surveyor, I do have a uh a a somewhat significant uh background in structural engineering. I actually worked uh for the Virginia DOT in the Structural Materials Division for a number of years. I I do soil design, uh foundation designs, so I so I have I have the appropriate knowledge and and ability to to be able to analyze such a wall. Um I wouldn't call myself a high-rise building designer, I would never try that, but for something like this, um certainly, certainly, uh you know, uh acceptable. Um so the the wall's about three, three or four feet, you know, high. Um at its highest point, it's about four feet, it's about three feet thick at its base. Uh the stones are roughly a half of, a half a foot to a foot and a half in diameter, maybe a little bit plus or minus. There's no sign of any movement, no sign of any distress. Um there's no evidence of any concentrated ponding of water at the base of it, no effervescence coming through the rocks where it's it's coming through. There's no drought uh movement, there's no erosion uh that I could tell, there's no sediment, you know, transport going on around or underneath it. No piping, which is uh the term for the water traveling through the soil underneath and then coming up on the other side. So I saw no evidence of that, and I'll show you some pictures in a in a minute. Um I did analyze it for the the increase in runoff, and of course, there is increase in runoff, and that's probably no surprise to anybody. Um but I will say that it's 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 small. Um it's not, it's not uh zero, but there is, there is a, it's a pretty negligible amount. I want to put this into perspective. So in the two-year storm, an increase of point one cubic feet per second is essentially running two or three garden hoses, typical garden hoses. Um in a hundred-year storm, it would be like more like nine or ten garden hoses. So it's not, it's not nothing. I don't want to try to pretend that it's nothing, but it's it's not a massive amount of increased runoff. And that's in a hundred-year storm, uh point, plus point two six. Um so conclusion, uh the 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 wall was is sound. Um it does increase the runoff, but in a fairly negligible amount, and that's already been been addressed um in previous conversations. Uh but, you know, overall, I don't believe this is impacting the wetland system. It it's certainly not damaging it. Um as you heard, it's actually making it maybe somewhat larger. Um it's not impacting any of the neighboring prop uh homes, um i.e. it's not getting into the basements, it's not getting, you know, it's not, it's not flooding out the residential structures uh around them, that they're all higher in elevation. And I'll actually show you uh show you that, well, it's not uh super easy to see here, but you can see the contour lines are 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 going around it. This is the depression, this is the same thing the previous applicant was talking about. This is the lowest point uh at all of the areas around it. So it does go here and then eventually uh either evaporates or infiltrates into the ground. Um and uh you know, even during the 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 peak runoff in the winter, you could see it wasn't actually uh in the neighbors buildings, I mean, it was, it was in the yard, uh but it's consistent with the numbers that I calculated. Um so that is, I believe, the the specific request that of of what I was asked to do, and I'm gonna let you ask me any questions you have at this point.
So this is Commissioner Bota, just to clarify what you're, the, to to summarize, you're saying is, yes, it increased the the volume in that wetland.
The flow, um the flow rate, it increased the flow rate, yes.
The flow rate and the total volume. But that because it is ponded there and it's not getting to the house or their basement, it's not a problem.
Well, I'm, I mean, I'm I'm not going to speak on behalf of the neighbors, but I I'm I'm going to uh be clear that the amount of increased runoff is not encroaching into the structures. I think that's the best way to say it. Now into the yard, yes, that's happening. It's not going into the basements, it's not going into the structures. Um the amount of increased runoff is again, you know, it's it's about, it's a couple of garden hoses of increased water. This does, and and and, you know, that that's not, obviously, if we put two garden hoses and and let it fill into a a an enclosed area, it's gonna fill up. Uh but once the rain stops, it's, you know, it's going to evaporate and it's going to infiltrate back in the ground, which is exactly what we see. And like I said, when I was I was on site and in fact, you saw previous pictures, and I'll show you uh I actually meant to show you some pictures here. So thi- this is, you know, uh in June uh after we had rained weekly and we had a significant event, you know, in in the end of May. Uh you can see it's dry uh at the back of that or in the the bottom of that wall there. Um you know, here's, here's another one, it's 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 dry. This is around the corner. Uh so this, here's the wall over here and it goes off to the to the left of the screen. This is the uh if you will, the overland ground travel path of least least resistance of the water. You can see there's no you don't have rippling of soil, you don't have um move, you know, lines indicating that there's, you you know, water coming through there, there's no, there's no channelization coming through there. It it it's, it's flowing through there, but it's not damaging. You know, you can see it's going right, right around this. You know, they would come right through here, and it's it's not, there there's no movement of material. Uh so so the amount of water runoff is not significant, it's certainly not sedimenting in, you know, it's not filling in, you know, in the in the uh the wetland area with sedimentation. Um it it's getting absorbed into the ground eventually. Um and evaporating, that's that's where it goes. And here's the wetland, which you already saw in the other, the other applicant. And it is, it is a fairly small, you know, it's it's small, there's some of the flags there, um it's right in this area.
So this is Commissioner Bota again, I I wasn't, I wasn't present um when this NOV came up in in May. Uh so um the commission asked for some additional information uh which you just provided, is there a any intention to capture some of that and and infiltrate on-site um that additional runoff instead of allowing it to overflow onto the um adjacent yard?
So the way that you would capture this type of uh, you know, runoff would be at the base of the wall. Um because you would want to catch it after it came through the gravel. And essentially, you do the exact same thing that the existing natural system would do, you would, you would create some sort of infiltration rain garden, if you would. Um and to some extent, uh that that's been, that's been done. Uh now, I am not a biologist, um I'm I'm not an environmental scientist, so I don't want to I don't want to pretend that, uh you know, I I'm I'm at the level of of Mr. Davidson, but um but you can see here, um this section right here, uh where the the cedars, um and I'll go back to the uh, you know, so these, these are two mature trees right here in the in the middle. So you got these young cedars and these young arborvitae's, and this area is um uh is currently basically being reclaimed to its natural uh conditions. And so this is the base of the wall. And this is essentially acting in its own right as an infiltration rain garden. Um now, it's not an engineered one, it's not a designed one with specific plantings. But what's happening is as the water comes, you know, through the gravel around the end, it sheet flows across into the wetland system. During this sheet flow application, a portion of it, some some percentage, you know, maybe five, maybe seven, is infiltrating. Uh a portion of it, maybe two percent, is 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 evaporating. And then the rest of it collects in the natural system, which, as you heard before, has probably grown to some degree uh as a result of this. And then the natural system does the rest. It it infiltrates it, it, you know, it evaporates it, it gets taken up into the plants um and all into the the natural occurrence. So your question being, would we treat it somehow here? Um you know, if this was a lot more runoff, absolutely, but for what we're talking about, it I I think you'd do more damage digging this out and putting in plantings here, uh putting a silk fence and all that than letting it continue to sheet flow into the natural system right down, right downstream. Again, I'm not an environmentalist, environmental scientist, and so, you know, I don't, I don't want to pretend that 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 would be the solution. Um that wasn't what I was asked specifically to address, I was asked, you know, I I went over the things I was specifically asked to address. Um but uh but that would be how I would view it. I hope, I hope that 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 helps.
It's, it does. So again, this is Commissioner Bota, when we have um any new application, um any impervious surface that's added the requirement in town um previously, previous to the revised regulations was the first inch was captured. The new regulations are the water quality volume. Um and, you know, it it sounded like you gave some I don't know, may may may, maybe, you know, back of the envelope calculations for what was infiltrated versus what runs off. I think what I'm really trying to understand is what you're estimating as infiltrating is that the water quality volume? Do we know what that quantity is? Um and I understand what you're saying about overland flow versus infiltration and not wanting to um re-disturb the ground um at the same time as a regulatory body. Um it's, it, I I don't want to ignore what our regulations are or the spirit of the regulations because it's already done and it was done without an application. Um and so therefore, because it was done without the application, they didn't have to follow the the standards that are set forward in the regulations um for when when people do things um in a traditional order. So I guess my, the 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 heart of the question is um do you know if what is being infiltrated is either the first inch from that impervious or semi-pervious material um or it, or the water quality volume?
Yeah, so I just, just while you were talking, you said the 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 first inch is a hundred and fourteen cubic feet. Um so if you use the um five inches per hour rate, that's the maximum allowed for Connecticut for infiltration volumes. Um that would, that one hundred and fourteen cubic feet would essentially be infiltrated i- if you, if you kept it in, you know, a uh a trench, the length of the base of the wall, right, at the length of the wall, and you, that trench was five feet and it was uh three inches deep, that one hundred and fourteen inches would be infiltrated in less than an hour. Um yeah, that, I mean, that one hundred and fourteen cubic feet, I'm sorry, I said, I think I said inches. So um so that that would be a three-inch deep by roughly sixty by, you know, five-foot um volume. Um so uh spreading that out, right, over uh thirty feet and letting it naturally flow into the vegetative soil, you know, and 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 all of the trees and the plants and the wetlands and all the the plantings and lawn that's over there. Um y- you're going to get that same infiltration. uh, again, wi- within, within an hour, um, or so. Now I, I, I'm, I'm doing some quick calculations with my spreadsheet open while you talk. I could certainly do these professionally, sign them, seal them, send them to you. I have no problem doing that. Um, but like I was alluding to, it's, it's a, it's a small amount of increase. Um, not nothing, but small. Uh, uh, and, and I'm just being honest. I'm not, I'm not just trying to, you know, uh, you know, I'm not trying to pull wool over your eyes. I'm just being honest about it. It is a small amount of water. It's a small area. Um, and I truly don't believe it's, it's causing any real impact. Uh, I recognize what you say. I do know that you are, you know, in, in these applications, if this were coming to you fresh, you would need to show the infiltration. Um, in this case, because it isn't after the fact and because, um, at this point, disturbing the area more is probably more harmful than, than leaving it alone. I, I would say that you should just be left alone. Um, but I, that's not my call. I'm just trying to give you some accurate facts and, and data. That's, if that helps.
This is Commissioner Masterman. My, my, my concern is, you know, um, we're on a little bit of a slippery slope here. Um, you know, if we say we're gonna leave the property and impact the neighbor's property, admittedly, maybe not to a large degree, but we know that we're getting more intense storms. We're getting more frequent storms. Uh, I, I, I think we need a better understanding of, of trying to retain as much of this runoff onsite as opposed to letting it, um, uh, travel. So calculations that could, uh, indicate what you would do to, uh, retain that, uh, onsite uh, would be helpful, I think, for future discussions on what we do here.
Yeah, I, I certainly can, can, I, I can put together a calculate, you know, a, a, a plan, you know, basically, uh, I would, I would just show right here at the base, I'd put, you know, a, a, a strip of basically like a rain garden, you know, probably five feet wide max and a very slight depression. Uh, showing the, the volume that would be infiltrated there. Um, and I understand your, your comments certainly. Um, I do, I do want to point out, I, I did use five minute duration, which is, you know, it's, it, this is the most conservative value, right? So a five minute duration storm is the most in, it's not the most intense, but it's the most realistically intense and it's a very common, uh, duration event to, to use the values for, which has, you know, seven, you know, well, 4.96 inches per hour rainfall. That's, you know, if you, I mean, if you think about that, that's a very violent thunderstorm. Uh, and that's in the two year. And then, so I'm even using 11.6 inches per hour of rainfall, which, I mean, is, is a lot. And, and yes, we do see them. Um, they're, and they are increasing, uh, but, but even at these very high influ- in intensity rates, we're seeing a couple of garden hoses worth of increased runoff.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent. Um, so I just want to highlight real quick a couple of points. Um, one is when I issued the notice of violation, the property owner was very quick to respond and invite me out onsite to take a look at things. Um, I was, I guess you could say lucky in the sense it was raining really hard when I went out there. It had been for a couple of hours. Um, and I didn't see a huge amount, I didn't see surface water or seepage through the wall. That's not to say there was no increase in storm water by any means. I'm just saying it wasn't, um, it, it wasn't a visible flow from any specific location. Um, however, I do also want to bring up that, and I don't know if the property owner wants to speak to it tonight, or maybe just touch base with her professional for the next meeting. Um, I know the property owner's a gardener. She's, she's got a lot of nice gardens on the property. Um, and I'm not sure if she's looking to maybe enhance that area a little bit, and maybe that's an opportunity to kind of address some of the commission's concerns. I do see that there is, uh, it looks like wine berry growing up against the wall, which I'm sure the property owner's not going to want because it will just start spreading over her entire property. Um, that would be the three leaved vine type plant that the cursor is currently on. Um, and it might be an opportunity to put in something that is both aesthetically pleasing and functional. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
This is Commissioner Begum. Can you, there's a picture, not this one, but another one, where it almost looks like maybe there's some landscaping cloth underneath or plastic or something. There's a black line running.
Yeah, Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent. There, there is some landscaping cloth out there. Um, I'm not entirely sure of the purpose. I was assuming it was weed suppression. Um, but maybe the property owner can explain.
Yes, it, it's a, can I just jump in right here? Is that okay? Can you hear me?
Sure, just, just, uh, announce your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, Rose Dufour, property owner at 114 Clark Avenue. And, um, there is some weed cloth down. And I do have plans to landscape and I was gonna do Alsparia fruit trees and plant more things, but of course I didn't want to do anything for fear that who knows what would happen with this wall. So I haven't actually done any gardening. And I have to say, and I wish I had videos of it, my neighbor's driveway, um, comes very steeply into my property and I would have a brook running through my backyard onto the wetlands whenever it rained. And I got very discouraged because it kept washing away a lot of my plantings. And so, um, this is why this project happened, because I wanted to have raised beds. I wanted to try and do something with all that runoff. And I believe that it's a lot less than what it used to be. Um, but I don't have any documentation of that, except for the fact that Jamie, yes, you did come out in the pouring rain and we walked and you saw the runoff from my neighbors. It's like a brook that comes off of that driveway because it's paved and it's steep and I can't do anything with it because it's his property. And then it comes onto my gravel that was put in, but then it seems to dissipate amongst all the, um, the stone and I believe the pipe that they put in, um, captures that also. And I have videos that I think I gave them to Jamie of one of the worst storms we had this past spring and, and there was no, I mean, it was really coming down and there was abs- absolutely no seepage coming from the wall onto the wetlands. And it wasn't even wet, mucky, like it wasn't sinking and it, it wasn't even really muddy. It was just, um, you wouldn't even know that there was anything coming through. So I really believe what I did solved a lot of it, but I don't have documentation of what it used to be. Um, so I, you know, that's, and, um, yes, my plan is to do a lot, a lot more plantings and, and to, but I, all natives. And I know, I, I know I have to get rid of that, um, those berries. I, I've just, I go out there and I'm discouraged because I had great plans for this whole season and now I can't really do anything. My hands are tied, but unbeknownst to me, my contractor, who I trusted, did it without even mentioning to me that I needed to get a permit.
This is Commissioner Begum. It seems to me that if, uh, Ryan Thompson comes back with some calculations and maybe you have a planting plan bu- by somebody who could say, but like an environmental person who could say with the planting plan that you're proposing, how much water that would use, if there's such a way to analyze it, that would be very helpful.
And I, I'd be more than willing to do that. And maybe I could use the people that my neighbor are using because they're familiar with the area. And, um, I, or definitely I could come up with a planting plan, but I just didn't want to do anything until I found out what the status was and then find out that if like he's saying, dig trenches, that would, that would have been terrible if I had planted all that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And this is Commissioner Boda. I mean, it, it, it's, it sounds potentially, I mean, it, that it would need to be identified, but it, it sounds like your soil has, is high infiltration rates. Um, it's already potentially pretty sandy in there. And so it, you know, knowing, uh, um, what the infiltration rates and the, the soil type is, it, it, maybe it doesn't have to be so deep. Maybe it can be slightly wider than deep, um, and you get to, um, put in some plantings that you'll enjoy and also takes up that additional, um, what, what would be runoff is captured, um, and infiltrated, um, right there in the property. Cause it sounds like a lot of it's already.
If I could, it, it's, it's actually, I, I don't believe it needs to be deep. I, I, I think you could do something between three and six inches deep, uh, for the trench and have it about five feet wide, um, to, to accommodate it. Um, so I don't, I don't see that as being a super deep trench there. And, and then if you put the plantings in it, that, you know, can absorb the water, then we maybe even, might even be able to avoid a trench at all. I, I, you know, I'm, again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a plant guy, so.
So, um, and, and Mr. Ford, you know, the Connecticut, uh, Stormwater Quality Manual has some really nice examples, um, of what that can look like. And so, um, as you're working with professionals who do this for a living, you can also learn a little bit about, um, the types of features that uh, serve this function and the kind of plants that go in. And you might be really pleasantly surprised with, um, what you'll end up with.
I would prefer not to have a trench and would prefer rather just to plant it and have the plants do the work than to have something out there, you know, accumulating the water if, if that were possible, but I guess I'd have to hire a professional.
It doesn't necessarily need to look like a trench. I don't mean to, to, sorry, uh, to the chair. I, I, we don't, I'm not gonna plan it for you, but it, it doesn't necessar- that's why I think looking at, uh, and, and Jamie can share that with you. Um, but it doesn't necessarily have to look like a trench. There are a couple of.
Yeah.
I, I think they might be pleased.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent. I believe, I believe that, um, Ryan mentioned three inch deep. So like, it would be more like a, a gentle swale kind of thing that would kind of help collect the water where the plants are. And then, you know, once it was filled, it would overflow, um, but it, it's not like it would constantly hold water and become, uh, you know, a trench full of water. Um, so, I mean, I, I think you've got a little bit more direction, some feedback. Um, commission basically just wants to have an understanding of whether that first inch or water quality volume can be calculated to be retained onsite and, um, a planting plan. And I know, uh, Rose, that you submitted some information, um, about plantings with the notice of violation process. And I think folding that in and any modifications you have and addressing the calculations, um, and or changes in, in your thought process, given the extra time that you've had to think about it. Um, in submitting that as part of the application would, would help get you to, um, where the commission is.
Okay.
Comfortable reviewing this as a complete application.
So we'll look to see Inland Wetland 250704 at our next meeting with some additional information. All right. Next up, we have some enforcement activities. Uh, 6A Caesar Correct 250501, 329 East Main Street. Failure of erosion and sedimentation control measures with, in association with the site development. This is a continuation of a show cause hearing. I think there's additional material in terms of pictures of, uh, what's been, uh, hap- what's happened on the site since our last meeting in response to some of the suggestions that were raised at the last meeting. Uh, Katie, you want to just quickly share those, um, photos?
Yep. Let me bring them up.
So overall today, the site looked, um, pretty good. There was a couple of areas of, um, silt fences that need to be addressed, um, as you can see here, um.
We got, we have the listing of images. We don't have the pictures yet.
Oh.
You might be specifically sharing the explorer window.
Got it. Hold on. Hold please. Sorry, bear with me. I'm not used to doing this.
Yep. Talk about on, on the job training, huh?
Yeah, no kidding.
I was supposed to be able to see Monday, but that didn't work out.
Yeah. Can you see now?
Uh, we're still just seeing the explorer window. When you open the screen share, sh- share your, your screen rather than the, the window, like any of the specific programs.
Okay, hold on. Let's try this again. Share.
There we go.
Okay.
It's loading, but we see a window.
Okay. Is it up now?
Yes.
Okay. So this is, um, one of the silt fences that is around, um, the dirt stockpile. Um, it looks like they had started to do some additional work. Um, and I'll, I'll get to another picture, but they, they started adding, um, soil kind of in front of this. And it looks like this looks relatively fresh. So I, it looks almost like they just dumped it over the side of the silt fence. So anyways, um, this silt fence needs to be addressed, um, before it over tops. Um, this one as well. This is around the, um, the Millings pile that we had discussed, um, at the last meeting. And as you can see, there is now a cover over it. Um, but there is some bowing of the, um, silt fences there. Um, this is the extra pile that I was talking about. They started kind of making another pile in front of the silt fence. This does not have any, um, protection around it. Um, and then as you can see, there's, it just kind of stops. Um, and then this is the, that, um, offending pile that I just discussed. Um, so again, this is the Millings, um, pile with just this, uh, section of silt fence. It looks like the rock fell and is, um, pushing down the silt fence. Um, there was some trash, um, on the backside. Um, actually on the eastern side of the property, um, that should be addressed at some point before it, um, makes it through into the wetland behind there. Um, and then this was a rock area that, uh, we had been previously concerned about pushing up against the silt fence. And it looks like they moved, um, the rock. So it's no longer bowing there. So that looks good. And that's it. Any questions?
Oh, I think you, you captured a number of things. Maybe we'll turn it over to the applicant and see what the response is.
All right. Good evening. Uh, John Schmitz, uh, with, uh, BL Companies, 355 Research Parkway, Maryland, Connecticut. Um, yeah, we, we also did a road control inspection this week, saw very similar things, have similar photos. So I, I won't share those with you. They basically show the similar things. The, um, the, uh, uh, plastic tarp was placed on top of the, um, reclaimed pile. Um, I believe there's also a second row of silt fence that went up. Um, clearly silt fence is working. It just needs to be, um, um, maintained. Uh, you can see that's holding back where it's bowing. Um, we also submitted, uh, just like a, a quick copy of two things. One was a, a, a plan showing potentially how the site would be sequenced as far as paving goes. And then another, uh, just kind of summary of typical placement, how material is placed, how paving is placed. Um, but just with regard, with regard to the, um, to the paving, um, the building that's under construction now closest to, um, Route 1, that, that's building three. So thank you for sharing. Uh, that is, um, on the left-hand side of the screen. So we've identified phase number one paving area in yellow. Um, that's the area associated with building three. Um, so that would be the area that would be paved first. And it's being with the contractor, the, uh, the plan would be to get that material down, um, September, October of this year. Um, it potentially could slip into October, November. Um, I would note that as far as paving goes, you know, we're, we're at the mercy of Um I would note that as far as paving goes, you know, we're we're at the mercy of the the batch plants that make pavement. Um they close typically around Thanksgiving, but it depends on the weather. Um the the temperature, and then they usually open up around March first or so. So operations for paving are usually um scheduled, you know, in the fall or the spring and the summer. Uh obviously not during the winter. So the idea would be that this area is paved, you know, this fall. And then the other areas would come back uh in the spring and summer of next year to finish up. Um and that goes as well as, you know, the other buildings would go as well, but um this is just kind of giving you a sense for how the um. How the residential portion of the project would proceed over the next uh the next year. So that's that's really all I had. Um again, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Commissioner Boda, this is helpful. And and so just to clarify that. Um. The then the idea is that for the phasing, or maybe you want to talk through the the narrative, but. Um the Millings would stay piled except for what was going to be pulled. So for say, for example, for phase one, they're only going to take the Millings that they need for phase one. Lay those down, then put the um the new asphalt mix on top. Phase two, three, and four would not have the milling put down until it was ready for asphalt. Shortly probably.
That that's correct. And I mean, the, so they would move the material um from where it is in the stockpile now over to phase one. And spread it out until they reach the proper grade, then they would would pave on top of it. Um paving is usually done in two courses. There's a a binder course. Uh which is, so in this instance, this is like a standard duty, so it's three inches of pavement. So you put one course down that's an inch and a half high, and then another half inch and a half on top to get the full um three inches. So that would that would be done this fall in phase area one. And then coming back in the spring, again, taking mo- material from the stockpile, they would then uh do phase area two. And pave on top of that and so on. Uh I don't have a a good handle on how much material is there, so I I I don't know. At this point, how how long it would it would last. I would expect it at some point, uh you know, they're gonna run out. And so, you know, maybe by the time they get to phase four, um they won't have any material left, and they'll be using uh just processed stone. Clean processed stone that would be brought in for that sub base material.
And uh again, Commissioner Boda, so as they are taking from the existing stockpile. Um then there would be a cover, the cover goes back over once they've taken their material. Um because, you know, the the ultimate goal re- really with this is is to ensure that the Millings are not just. Sitting out um and and looking back through the past discussion, there was. Talk of, you know, well, now that the. The um the pavement is removed, there's a sort of assumption of increased infiltration rates and. You know, maybe, but you know, it's been so com- compacted down by the existing. The the previous uh pavement and cars and all that, maybe it's infiltrating, maybe it's not, but if it is infiltrating, then we just. Don't want it running through those Millings um for. I don't know, I I can't see what the year is on pa- on phase four, but um assuming. Summer or fall of twenty six.
That's correct, so next summer.
Yeah, so I just don't want the infiltrate, if it do- if it is infiltrating for a year. Through the Millings.
And right, and and so John Schmitz, yeah, I mean, the the pile would remain covered, so, you know, it it may, they can work. Around the the cover and move it out of the way when they need to take material over to phase two, over to phase one, and then. Uh m- move it again to phase two, but uh but the the pile, as long as it's there, will remain covered.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bassman. What's the um timeline for the corrective erosion controls? Fixing them?
But I I think where you're you're referring to what um staff mentioned about the the um. The silt fence that's uh holding back the pile, I think that's.
There were a couple of examples, yeah.
Right, uh yeah, I mean, I'll, uh we we also did a uh in corrode control inspection, I think, uh yesterday. So that'll be going out to the the contractor and sure and let them know that they need to um, you know, address that. I I believe the standard practice is once the material reaches half the height of the silt fence, um that it needs to be uh. That needs to be moved back. Or reinforced.
Just for context, um relatively speaking, the the current location of the Millings stackpile is right about in here. Um and that, again, it's covered and it's um. It has the the silt fence around it. And then those other um dirt piles that I had showed are. Like in this area here, along here.
Yeah, I'm not, I haven't been to the site this week. I'm not sure what those what those new piles are. Uh they may just be temporary, which why, which may explain why they're not. Um whether whether there's no silt fence around them, because silt fence would usually be applied to a stockpile area that's going to be in place for a while. So that may just be some material that's that was placed on a temporary basis until it's it's moved somewhere else.
Could, it could very well be, it's just, you know, it was there when I was there, so I figured it out.
Yep.
Add it in.
Is there a standard definition of temporary?
Uh I think as far as DEP goes, they look at something uh as uh less than thirty days. Um because uh the requirement would be anything over thirty days would receive um. Would receive uh um like top dressing and and it would be planted. So so for instance, if we had a topsoil pile and it was going to be there more than thirty thirty days. Um we would have to pro- um put um grass seed on it and try and get some vegetation on it. Um so it's it's there, but so usually uh less than thirty days.
Thank you.
Jamie Frederick and the Wintland Agent, uh I I have not been out to the site recently. Um however, Katie did go over her findings with me. Earlier and also, of course, just now. Um to me, it sounds like a lot of the corrections that need to be made on site are maintenance based. Um and and no active failures are on site at this moment. Um there's definitely some. What I would call typical problems is uh are not typical, but um. I think the maintenance of the erosion controls, the bulging around the stockpile, those are the kind of things that. I think contractors generally let slip first because they don't see it as. Uh important, which, you know, isn't the case per se, but it's if something's gonna be left behind. I'd rather it be the silt fence around the stockpile and that the in- the exterior controls are being maintained. So I think that um the problems that were outlined in Katie's overview. And um the erosion control reports are things that the contractor should be addressing through receipt of those reports. And um, you know, through open communication, we should be able to get those things addressed.
Any other comments from the commission? Okay. Thank you for the report. We're up to CC uh.
Wait, uh Jamie Frederick and the Wintland Agent, before we move on, does the commission want to take any action on the order? Do you want to keep it in place and and have an update at a later time? If so, what's what's the target? Things that you're waiting to be addressed um. The erosion control reports that we're receiving are part of the permit itself, so if the commission were to determine the. Order was satisfac- was addressed, we would still be receiving those reports. And of course, if anything else came up, we would. Bring a new cease and correct order back, um unless there's specific things the commission wants to follow up on in regards to the. The current order.
This is Commissioner Goklowski. They've they've covered the pile. That was that was a a pretty big point right there. And they have established the erosion controls um. And I'm sure, Jamie, that you're going to continue monitoring the site. Um. I don't know if if it's necessary to keep it on our agenda at this stage of the game. And if there is an issue, it can come before the commission again. I mean, if they're, i- if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing at this time. Um. I guess we can just do a wait and see. I mean, there's not going to be, there's nothing weak, they're going to be paving in the fall. And and any paving is not going to start until next spring, so.
Um, this is Commissioner Boda, so it this, this initially, this notice. Went because of the disconnection in the stormwater management, right? That's where we started with this notice?
Frederick and the Wintland Agent, the the cease and correct order initially was issued because um. The inlet protection and the catch basins was not sufficient, and stormwater was bypassing the bags for the. Pavement level in inlet and going through the curb line inlet. So there was untreated stormwater going through the cur- getting into the catch basins, which discharged directly to the water course. And then we've kind of morphed a little bit through site full- fuller site analysis to the point of. Um the conversation that we're at today.
So, but if we re- return back to that. Um stormwater. M- management, are we at a place, so? Um. It. How is that water traveling now? And since it can't. Move in the the way that it was initially planned because of the elevation, the elevation change. Um. Is it being properly treated or captured, retained? Um to the best possibility um. In order to, uh because wh- what, we would keep it open if the problem isn't solved, right?
Right.
Um, we would close it if the problem is solved. We would amend it or uh, you know, if. If we're continuing to monitor because we don't have a permanent solution. To this um unanticipated issue with the design. So I suppose my question is. Where are we in relation to addressing the initial issue? Which is that the stormwater isn't traveling where it was meant to and therefore being treated. Appropriately.
Jamie Frederick and the Wintland Agent, so it was traveling to where it was meant to per the permit design. It was intended to when it um, when the stormwater was going to be leaving the site. To go through the active stormwater system. It's just that the representation was that there would be. Um proper erosion controls to treat that water prior to a discharging. So my concern was that the erosion controls in the curb line. Catch basins was not sufficient because there was no curb line inlet protection. So since that, they have added sandbags to essentially kind of close off that curb line. And force the water to go through the silt sacks. So now they have to maintain those silt sacks and empty the sediment out periodically. Or else, yes, they'll have stormwater essentially sitting on the active site. And I believe we we can have um Mr. Smith speak to it. I think that's where the the discussion on infiltration came up in the sense that. There's probably less water getting diverted to the stormwater system. Because not only might there be an increased opportunity for infiltration, but this the grade of the site. Is generally slightly lower than the frame of the catch basin, so in in at least some places. So you're not necessarily getting that water.
Offsite?
Into the system and offsite to the wetlands and rather keeping it on site. And I have seen that they have been doing some de-watering activities in response to that, and I've been making sure when I go out there that they're. Doing that appropriately to appropriate locations and through appropriate measures, so. I don't know if Mr. Smith says anything to add to that.
No, I think you you described it. I I personally haven't witnessed any of the de-watering, but um. I think you you did a good job of describing uh, you know, what's what's going on with regards to the to the system. Um what happened initially, how we got here to begin with, and um I don't really have anything to add.
Yeah, Jamie Frederick and the Wintland Agent, just to clarify, I think most of the de-watering that I've seen has been groundwater related. Due to excavation for utilities and and, you know, various activities on site.
So this is Commissioner Boda. I guess the question is, is there a reason why we would. Either leave it open or we would modify it versus closing it?
This is Commissioner Bassman. I guess the only reason to leave it is the comment about having to. Uh periodically um clean out the uh erosion controls. So that the sediment doesn't build up. Uh other than that, I would guess I would lean toward closing.
Jamie Frederick and the Wintland Agent.
Go ahead, Jamie.
I I would say that's default, that's routine maintenance, um and that would fall within the permit terms. Um I I think it's just a matter that, I emphasized it because it is a, it is a unique handling of stormwater. And it in in part is because it's it's redevelopment, and they did have an existing stormwater system. And they used that in their design of their stormwater management during the construction process, which is something that's fairly unique for the commission. To have seen. Um so I I I think I think the point is, is now that the. Inlet protection is fully functioning um in those locations, the need to maintain them will be higher. Because the silt won't be bypassing the bag and going to where we don't want it. So they're gonna have to maintain it or else it's essential, it's gonna become a problem for them because it will start flooding their site. So, I mean, it's, I think, a pretty easy thing for them to see and identify if it becomes a problem.
Sounds to me like there was a problem identified, this Commissioner Bassman, there was a problem identified. The problem was dealt with, corrected, and now you're telling me it's a maintenance issue, in which case. I I guess I would lean toward closing then the uh existing cease and correct.
Jamie Frederick and the Wintland Agent, and of course, if they failed to maintain it, that would then become an illegal violation. If the commission decides to go forward.
Yeah. I mean, I I this is Commissioner Boda, I was, I I had a similar thought, which is that if we have, you know, re- repeated issues. With the same types of um. The same erosion control issues in the same places that aren't being addressed, and that would be a separate cease and correct. And we go from there. And maybe we see a general contractor. Along with Mr. Schmitz, I don't I don't know, maybe that's who needs to address the issue. Right, I know Mr. Schmidt like enjoys being with us here on Thursday evenings, and he would be sad to miss one of our meetings.
People tuning in may think he's a commissioner, at this point, he's on so often.
Right, yeah. There's a couple of weeks in a row now. Move to Branford.
It's a lovely town.
I know.
Any commissioner have a different thought than than closing cease and correct twenty five oh five oh two? And um uh with the maintenance of the uh existing erosion controls um. Being under a watchful eye. We need a vote, Jamie, or not?
We need a motion.
This is Commissioner Bassman, I can make a motion that uh we close cease and correct twenty five oh five oh two. As the problem identified has been addressed uh by the applicant and um. And that's the motion.
This is Commissioner Boda, second up.
Further discussion from the commission? Commissioner Begum.
Commissioner Begum, aye.
Commissioner Goklowski.
Commissioner Goklowski, aye.
Commissioner Boda.
Commissioner Boda, aye.
Commissioner Papantonis.
Commissioner Papantonis, aye.
Commissioner Bassman, aye. Okay. Anything else on this, Jamie? Are we done on 250502?
That ends it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. We won't see you next meeting. Um, Jamie, you need a, a break here?
Yeah, if we could just take a five-minute recess, that would be great.
Great. See you back at, uh, eight fifty.
There's daylight here until almost ten PM.
Any northern lights?
Uh, I haven't seen any. But it's pretty cool.
I'll bet.
It's been cool, um, figuratively and literally. I've been wearing sweatshirts and it's been in the low fifties, mid forties.
Sounds wonderful.
You may wanna stay there a while. It's pretty hot here. Uh, Jamie, I think I, uh, referenced the wrong cease and correct on that last motion. I think I said 250502. Katie can check me on that. And it should be 250501.
I'll double check it tomorrow and I'll fix it. Yep.
Or we could just quickly clarify now to make sure we don't have to put it back on the agenda.
He, he did say twenty-five, he, he, he did make the move. Well, I almost corrected him. I thought he was gonna catch it, but.
Don't hesitate next time, Jason.
All right, let's just quickly, quickly clarify for the record before moving on to the next item.
All right, do we have, uh, a quorum? Yes, we do. Uh, this is Commissioner Bassman. On the last motion for cease and correct twenty-five oh, twenty-five oh five oh one, three twenty-nine East Main Street. I incorrectly identified in the motion the cease and correct, uh, number twenty-five oh five oh two is not three ninety-nine East Main Street. And so the motion that I would, uh, that I made is in reference to twenty-five oh five oh one. We don't need to revote, do we, Jamie? It's an administrative correction, right?
Yeah.
I, I, I.
You wanna vote just to be, huh?
Yeah, let's just do it, please.
Okay, commi, uh, Commissioner Begum.
Commissioner Begum, aye.
Commissioner Papantonis?
Commissioner Papantonis, aye.
Commissioner Gokowski?
Commissioner Gokowski, aye.
Commissioner Boda?
Commissioner Boda, aye.
Commissioner Bassman, aye. Now, cease and correct twenty-five oh five oh two, one seventy-five Cherry Hill Road, Hoesley Road, one sixty-seven Cherry Hill Road, failure of erosion and sedimentation control measures in dissociation with the site development. Again, a continuation of the show cause hearing. Do we have updated information on this, Jamie?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent. So Katie went out and did an inspection today to make sure that, you know, there was no, nothing that, um, needs to be addressed as far as the cease and correct order. I believe she had a couple of notes about routine maintenance that needs to be addressed, but no, no failures or anything that would rise to a cease and correct level. Um, is that fair to summarize, Katie?
It is, um. The only, um, issue that I really saw out there today was, um, some of the, uh, hay bales are degrading and no longer doing their job. Um, I will pull up and I will show you. Um, one of the, um, surprises of the inspection and I was pleased to see is the, um, the, this used to all be a massive, um, dirt pile, which they have, um, thinned down and they, uh, reseeded and put matting on top. And as you can see, they've been watering with this sprinkler. Um, so that looks very stable. And um, there's, you know, little areas like up here, the silt fence is, is down, um, that should be restaked. Um, the, this is the detention basin, which, um, as you can see, has very little water in it. I believe, um, I was out with Jane Ellis, who is the zoning enforcement officer, and she, um, had said that they were de-watering it last week. Um, so that's where it's at now. Um, it looks like the catch basins, this, the silt sacks were recently cleaned. Um, there was no standing water and there was, uh, there was like very little, um, debris in there. So that was the first time I've seen them, um, this clean. So that was, that was nice. This one has a little bit of dirt in it, um, at the bottom, but again, no standing water. Um, this is an area where the, the, there, there's no, um, erosion presently, um, there, this, but this was an area of very heavy erosion. Um, and as you can see, the hay bales are, um, looking a little worse for wear. So you should just keep an eye on that area and, um, replace the hay bales if needed. Um, silt fence, um, this is behind the matted, um, area. Um, silt fence is down in some areas. I don't even, I, I'm not even sure that it's needed at this point, but, um, that's not my fault.
Frederick and the wetland agent, I will identify there is another silt fence downgrading of this amongst all of that vegetation that was intact the last time I was out there. I do think it would benefit to have that silt fence repaired in the sense that water flowing that direction is, um, causing a gully, uh, downslope of the slope that was stabilized. So I think to the point that, um, that can be controlled is good, but I don't see it as being an immediate issue.
Yeah. Um, this was also an area of heavy erosion. Um, again, it looks stable now. They have, um, it's, they have the rock trench here and they have multiple layers of silt fences, um. So that looked okay. Um, these hay bales up here are starting to deteriorate and it's, was noted in past reports about this gully that's, um, kind of going under the hay bales. Um, and it was, um, requested by the erosion control inspector that it be filled in so that it stops, um, kind of forming that channel, um, but it hasn't been done as of yet. Um, and then these are the hay bales. Obviously, they're not doing anything at this point, um, and they should be, um, replaced. Again, another empty silt sack. This one, this is across the, the street, um, so I guess it would be on the southwestern side, I think. Yeah, um, and there was just a little bit of standing water in there, but it wasn't, it wasn't bad at all. And that's it. So overall, it was, it was, um, pretty good today.
So Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, um, the cease and correct order was issued because sediment was getting to the water course, uh, further down Cherry Hill Road. It was getting there down along Cherry Hill Road, running along the curb line, well, it's not curb, the shoulder of the pavement, if you will. Um, and also there was some seepage going through silt fence on the rear of lots eight through, probably eight through ten, um, because the silt fences were loaded and the load was um, likely stretching the material and allowing for fines to get through. Um, so since the cease and correct order has been issued, there have been a lot of corrections made on site. There's been a lot of stabilization, both through intentional efforts, um, as Katie pointed out with the, the matting and the, the sprinklers on the slope there, and then also just through kind of seed bank material taking over a little bit in the spring, um, on some of the more open areas on lots that have not been um, developed yet or not starting to be developed yet. Um, so at this point, I think the biggest issues that are outstanding are, again, it's gonna be an ongoing maintenance issue with the erosion controls, but, um, part of what got us here was that more of the site was disturbed than the commission had approved through the phasing plan. So I think having some of that revegetation throughout the site has kind of helped address that to some level. Um, they've also put in check stone, or not stone, uh, some places stone check dams, but they've also put in a silt fence, uh, hay bale back check dam across some of those interior sites to slow the water, um, where it was previously channeling and still does channel, but, um, routine maintenance of those measures should help continue with that control. Um, so I think at this point, outstanding concerns mostly for the commission are impacts that did occur to the wetland slash water course areas. Um, the owner of the development did have George Logan go out and do an assessment and that was submitted. Um, the item has been tabled a couple of times, so I don't think we've reviewed it at a meeting, um, but it has been sent out to all commissioners. So hopefully you've had a chance to look at that. Um, and Katie, it looks like is gonna pull it up for us, um. And the report basically identified a small area of accumulated sediment in the water course that should be removed by hand using a shovel and indicated that the wetland area, um, was vegetated with, um, and identified herbaceous cover and that it would cause more impact to go in and try and do anything than to leave it as is. So I had mentioned via email, uh, the concern of whether it would be appropriate to do another investigation once some of that herbaceous ground cover goes dormant to see if any corrective actions are warranted. And I don't know that it ended up in the Dropbox, but he did receive a response from George Logan indicating that that, he agreed that that could be warranted. So, um, in that regard, I would maybe recommend keeping this open, um, so that a follow-up inspection could be completed. Um, maybe in like November, December to see whether there's any corrective action warranted in the area where that red triangle is, where it says sediment and wetlands. Um, and then if the commission agreed and thought it was appropriate for the sediment in the water course to be removed, I would say that that should potentially happen sooner rather than later, well, maybe not sooner, but during a low flow condition. And I know, um, that the water course is located on RWA water, RWA property and they would like to have somebody present to oversee that activity. So I would uh, advise the commission, have that be a condition of that activity occurring. Um, so that's the highlights of kind of where I'm at. Also, I think the other thing that's important as far as making sure we don't continue to have water running down the shoulder of Cherry Hill Road causing like this problem would be to have an update on the basin. And I know that they're de-watering the basin. My understanding is with the intent of figuring out if they're going with the initial design or the redesigned. So, um, I guess with that, I would hand it over to the recipients of the order to, um, address that concern. And then also there had been a raised question of who's responsible for what. I'm not sure if we have to hash that out right now or not. So I'd say maybe let's focus on the where we're at right now and the basin. And of course, if there's anything else you think is pertinent for the commission's review, um, feel free to share that.
Thank you. Uh, Timothy Lee, on behalf of one of the recipients of the order, I represent B C Investments, who was the original applicant and the original owner of the subdivision. So I, I appreciate Katie's site investigation. Uh, we can certainly talk to her about taking care of some of those hay bale and silt fence issues to make sure that those just get propped up a little bit. Uh, I pretty much agree with Jamie's summary of what George Logan's report said, um, and to highlight the two things that Jamie said i- is that there is some work that needs to be done right now by hand, uh, and that we will have to coordinate that with, uh, RWA. And then the more recent correspondence from George was that the site should be investigated again after in the, later to the fall or the winter time. In the later of the fall or the winter time to make sure that the, um, vegetation that has grown right now. Uh, will continue to stabilize the site. So I don't. We don't take issue with the recommendation that the matter be tabled tonight to, to November in order to allow that to happen. Uh, with regard to the final point raised by, um, Jamie, my client is working on the, uh, detention basin. They do have a new design for the, um. For the. Detention basin and for the, for the sand filter. I don't know, he shared that with me tonight. I don't know if he shared that with. With Jamie or not, but he does have a, a plan for the filter that we can ul- ultimately share with. With the planning staff and the wetland staff. So. Those were the kind of the three highlights I took away from the conversation today. If there's more the commission wants to discuss, we're happy to, to do that, but I do think we do have. My client has been proactive, uh, in, in trying to address these issues. Um, I guess the last issue that, that Jamie had brought up that we don't need to hash out right now is that my client was the original. Applicant for the subdivision. He is still the owner of the road. It hasn't been turned over to the town yet, so to the extent there's. Issues impacting the wetlands and, and the drainage and the catch basins, that is my client's responsibility. He, oh, he does own that responsibility. At this point in time, he has conveyed out a number of lots. He is only the owner of lots three, four, five and seven. At this point in time, those lots are undeveloped. Um, it, it's our position that, that some of the sedimentation and control was caused by the developer of other lots. Uh, when they were digging the foundations and stockpiling material. That being said, we think that those issues have pretty much been addressed. With the assistance of, of, of Bruno, my client, uh, but that's the current status of, of the. Title ownership to the lots in the subdivision.
Um, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, so to touch real quick on the lots, um, I think that that concern was raised by the commission because so much of the site was. Uh, exposed bare. Soil conditions, um, and I think there has been a decent amount of vegetation that has come in. That that might be something we can worry about should another problem arise on a, on a case by case basis, um, I. Uh, and then I think, what else did I want to say? Yes, so there are three parties to the cease and correct order. Um, there is B C Investments and then. Uh, there's also the developer that was, um, the property owner and or. Contractor for both some of the lots that were, um, contributing to the issues. And then also Regional Water Authority as party because they're the owner of the impacted wetland slash water course areas. Um, so I don't think we have anyone else present this evening aside from. Aside from B C Investments.
I think that's right, the only, I, I think that's right. The only person I've seen is Bruno from B C Investments.
Um, my concerns about. Individual lot. Issues I think are, are currently addressed. And my main, and I, and the, the road is currently addressed as well. So I think the main concern is just making sure we don't have a repeat of that, especially. After we, you know, move out of the summer and start getting into potentially some increased storm events again, um. And so if, if it's possible to get an update as to. When the basin might be constructed in the, it's, and if, if. Bruno could confirm if the sand filter. Plan is in fact the one that was submitted and reviewed by the commission. Submitted, reviewed and approved by the commission, or if it's a further modification that he's looking to move forward with.
Uh, Bruno, I, I, you've heard the question from Jamie, if you could just confirm that.
Uh, hi, hi guys, Bruno Chacon. Um, so the, the plan is, uh, right now currently the basin is empty. Uh, it needs to dry out a little bit before we can get any, uh, machines in there. Um, the plan is for next week to start mucking it out. Um, stockpiling that on either lot seven or on the other lot, on the other lots, three and four. With a silt fence around it, um, and then from there, we're going to go ahead and do the sound, the sand filter system. I'm not going to take a chance with going into the late season, trying to make this basin work with the original design. So I already have the contractor on it, a couple of different guys, uh, you know, going to work on, uh, pricing for me and. We're going to do that, that second redesign.
Okay. Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I'm glad to hear that's moving forward because I think that that will. Help alleviate a lot of the issues that we were having with the roadway. I do just want to point out when you do muck out the basin. Be very careful with where you put that, um. Cause I think that was part of. Problems earlier on, because it was, I, I'm not sure who mucked it out, um. But that material was spread out over the lots and that's going to be a lot of really fine materials and those are harder to control with erosion control measures. So I, I think to the point that you can, um, kind of. Not spread it out and make sure you have good control measures in place. Initially and maintain them. It's really going to save you a lot of headaches because that material is going to want to move.
Yeah.
Um, it's going to be a worst nightmare, so make sure that you're prepared for that.
I will.
Go ahead, Jamie, when, when you talked about continuing the twenty-five oh five oh two, um, is that. Maintain and modify or just continue as is?
I would probably, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I'd probably recommend continue. Um, and just, just, I would say obviously you'd have to express when you're continuing it too. Um, so that that invest, and when you would expect that investigation to be completed by, um. And then wait to make the decision after you've received that report, um, that would be my recommendation because. I think to the point that we can have an open dialogue with the parties. Um, as materials come in, we don't want to, we don't want to end the show cause hearing and expect new materials to come in and. Kind of shortchange that process. But I think in the effort of being transparent and. Um, keeping the process. Going in a way that everyone knows where they, they stand is, is important. So, um, I think maybe continuing it. For review in. You know, second meeting in January or first meeting in February, probably first meeting in February would be ideal because then that way it gives plenty of time for the inspection to be done. Actually, maybe I would say January because any activity that would want to happen would be. Uh, you would want to do it during the dormant phase, so I don't think we want to push it out too far, um. And then of course, if, if they're able to get the inspection done sooner and they would want to request a sooner meeting with the commission, I think we could always bump it. Up, but I think we want to try and set a date where we're not pushing it back out.
This is Commissioner Bagamar, separate. Uh, question, uh. How much, this is probably for Bruno if he knows, how much muck, so to speak, cubic, cubic feet is going to be taken out? And what, and, and should? Should there be a, like we've seen in some other, the plastic covering, if that is highly, you know, if there's a high potential for it to migrate?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I'll just, um, so I'll mention. The two concerns I have with that material are, one, it's a bunch of fines. And two, it's also going to have a lot of water in it. So I think covering it isn't going to help with the second problem. Um, so I mean, it, I think initially it seems like a good idea to spread it out because then it has more surface area and it will dry faster. But then what you're also doing is you're putting a bunch of really fine material that as soon as it rains, it's going to want to run off. And if your controls are stressed at all, your controls are going to be much less likely to be able to handle it. I mean. You might even want to look into whether or not there's. Some old, I, I, I don't know, um, I just want to make sure you're very aware and you're keeping it away from any of the slopes. That are on site because it, you know, the whole site's a hill, um, so making sure you're very aware of. Where that material is going and not creating. Fresh headaches is important. And maybe that's something you talk about with your engineer, um, as far as where, where the appropriate place or whether that material should be removed from site and if there's a. An alternative use that it might be appropriate for.
Is Commissioner Basman, is the muck material? Destined to be used on site or is it, uh, discardable?
Uh, Bruno Chacon here, w- we can use it, once it's dried out, we can use it to, to, uh, mix in with the other material that's on site. Like there's topsoil, there's fill, it could, it could be mixed with that material through screening, screening process.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, yeah, I mean, it's up to the property owner, how, or property owners, how they want to manage it. I just want to make sure. That, um, we don't see the same problem we saw last time that the basin was mucked out.
Uh, Jamie, excuse me, Bruno here again, um, I, I think the best bet maybe with, uh, your opinion as well, and I can ask Giuliano's. Maybe I just could move it across, across the street to one of the other lots, lot, uh, four or five, seven, uh. I mean, seven's pretty flat up there, but it may end up going back down if we get that, if we run back into this weather. I mean, the ultimate idea is to get this, get the system in. Before the bad weather hits and it's working and now rainfall hits and the system's working and we're not. Back into that situation. As far as the, the mucking out. The silt there, we can control it really well on, on a flat surface.
Yeah, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I would recommend consulting Giuliano Associates with where you should put it and how you should manage it. Um, the concern was last time it was kind of spread out on lots seven through nine. And it was relatively flat where the material was placed, but then it drops off. Dropped off to kind of like a steep slope right above the silt fence, um, and so. I, I totally think it's manageable. I just think it's something you want to make sure that you're, you're, you're considering and. Whoever's doing the work on site is aware of, um, and conscious of so that you don't have issues.
Any other discussion from the commission on, uh? One seventy-five Cherry Hill Road?
Um, this is Commissioner, but I was curious about the timing on. The removal, the hand removal of sediment from the stream.
Uh, Jamie.
You mentioned low flow earlier.
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, that would, that would be my recommendation and or it was George Logan's recommendation. I'm not sure. It's been a while since I read the report. Um, that, and I'd also recommend, like I said previously, that RWA is notified so that they can have somebody present to oversee that work. Or, yeah.
And then, and then a, a follow-up of investigation?
Yeah, follow-up investigation after vegeta, the, the herbaceous vegetation goes dormant.
Go ahead.
Uh, with. Uh, that report to be reviewed by the commission at, um. I hate the way the calendar works right now on the updated windows. Um. At the. Just because of the holidays, I think it would be easier to do January and maybe push it out to the second meeting. Um, which would be. January twenty-second, twenty twenty-six.
Um, so this is Commissioner about, I, I, I think the timing on the reporting is okay and. The timing on the work, um. I just, for folks who are less familiar with that piece. Um, in the Rema report about bentec macroinvertebrates, I was. I thought, uh, Mr. Logan might be here so he could address it directly, um. But he's, he's not, so, so if it's all right, I'll speak to it for a minute, um, so. Macroinvertebrates are, uh, um, which he, he referenced the. Uh, caddisflies, mayflies, annelins, beetles, um, those are. Used as, as water quality indicators, um, each. One of those species has a specific tolerance to pollution, um, and the presence of. Things like mayflies and sometimes caddisflies, um, i- is an indicator of. Uh, those are, those are more sensitive back macroinvertebrates and so with water pollution and that can be. Sediment, that can be temperature, uh, that can be nutrient, that could be pH. Um, those particular macroinvertebrates will not be there. Um, and instead will have a population primarily of, um, black file larvae, um. Mosquitos, uh, other, uh, like leeches, that sort of thing, so, um. I, I see that he's mentioned it in the report. The fact that there's mayflies, but he didn't specify which mayfly, um, I am a little bit, I, I think with his report. It would be helpful if there was some additional detail, um, if he's going to reference those. Bentec macroinvertebrates, which I, I think he was right to do, um, but it, it is also important to note that if. This report was. Aided in May. Uh, let's see, when did he say he did the, he did the report in May or maybe early June?
The report was June, the, the inspection was May twenty-eighth.
Thank you, um, so. There's a couple of seasons where, so you get earlier spring and then, um, in the fall where you'll get a, a better. Collection than in high summer or, uh, deep winter, you're not going to get the same kind of. Macros just, they're, they're deeper or whatever, so, um. That seems like he can. Be the ultimate judge of that is that's his, his, um, area of expertise, but I would. Suspect that that report. At least through the bentec macroinvertebrate lens would need to be done in October. Um, in order to get a similar. Distribution of organisms. And I would just, in that report, like him to be a little bit more specific in terms of the. Total distribution. So. Um. Something. Uh, I, I guess the best description, I, he doesn't need to do a full, um. There's, there's EPA style reports where it doesn't need one of those, but, um, if we can get a distribution of the organisms. That he finds as well as a description of his sampling methods, that would be, um. I think more appropriate. And it would tell us a little bit more about the impact to the stream.
Um, Jamie Frederick. In the wetland agent, um, so. Just to be clear, um, so I was kind of focusing on the wetland area and the sediment accumulation there, but you're saying that you would also like. A follow-up investigation of. The wa- the water course in regards to. The macroinvertebrate distribution, species and, and sampling methods, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, I'm not sure. October, it might be possible to, to hit both at the same time. That's something that George would be able to. Address, but I, I don't know off the top of my head, um, if that would be one visit or two.
Right. Like I said, and this is Commissioner, but I think that, you know, as a professional, he can. Make the, those determinations, but from, from field experience, um. I, 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 I don't typically want to take a sample much later than October. Um. September's fine. But again, you may not get the same because these things hatch out, right? And so, um. I, I don't know, the, you, you still get some mayflies and stone flies if they're there in the fall, but. I don't know that you get the same quantity as you would in the spring. So it may be a little bit like apples to oranges.
Hmm, uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I. Also want to point out, it is a very flashy, um, system. Uh, and there's definitely significant natural erosion occurring in the water course as well. So I think it would also potentially be difficult to, to. To necessarily tell, you know. What's driving that change?
Well, but I think, I mean, that, this is Commissioner Boda, that, that, that is why we use bentec macroinvertebrates. They are. A better indicator of. A better indicator of overall water quality than several other methods because. Their presence, um, tells us a fuller story, I mean, if you went in and you did a. Um, turbidity sample, that's gonna, that's gonna vary from, um, you know, day to day, week to week, um, but. The, the overall health of the, the, the water quality there, um, determines which Bentec macroinvertebrates are gonna, uh. That that is a suitable habitat for them. So it's, it, it's, it's a happy thing to see that there's, there's mayflies in there, um, that tells us that the water quality. Is decent enough for some of the more sensitive organisms.
This is.
Even if it's flashy.
Yeah, I guess, I guess.
Jamie, in, in terms of the action this evening. While we continue, um, this season correct, I assume there's gotta be some document. That captures all of the material that we'd like to see associated with the season correct. Especially since we have some extended timeframes. Do you normally send a, 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 a letter that would identify all this?
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, so I kind of vary between a letter and, um, an email follow-up, I think that. This would be at the threshold of, of a letter just to kinda help make it an easy identifier and stand out and that, you know, kind of. While an order, a decision on the order hasn't been made, a decision of how we're moving forward has, you know, after we get to that point. Um, and I, I guess what I was saying about the macroinvertebrates isn't necessarily. The concern, I, I, I think the concern I really would have would be the same one that Commissioner Bodo was bringing up about. There will be a shift of species, so, um, and, and, and maybe that's part of it is that. The professional can speak to whether that shift is potentially due to a water quality difference or if it's a seasonal shift. Um. Because I do think, I don't know, I know that Commissioner Bodo does have more experience than me with macroinvertebrate. And water quality assessments, I, I did a little bit in college, but I know that she's been much more involved in that process than me, so. Um, certainly think it's appropriate to ask and have the soil scientist respond to.
Commissioner Bashman, go ahead, further discussion on this item or are we at a point where we can fish or cut bait on what we're gonna do here?
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, should I summarize where I think we're at and, and see if.
That would be helpful, I think.
Okay, so, um. One question of clarification for Commissioner Bodo, do you want the removal of the sediment to occur before? After that follow-up macroinvertebrate assessment? Or do you not really care?
This is, this is Commissioner Bodo, I think that, um, what Mr. Rema had put in, what we discussed earlier about it being at low flow, so. If, if, um, if it has gotten really hot and dry there, um, then that is the best time to do it. Um, it's not gonna, you know, the, 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 the high summer, so July, August is a really great time to. Get that stuff out and not wait for the fall rains to start again.
Okay, so my summary, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, is that we're gonna have the sediment removal as outlined by Rema report. Removed by hand during low flow conditions to be overseen to, by RWA, um. That the soil ta- scientists will inspect the site again in the fall to assess. Uh, soil accumulation in the wetland after the wetland vegetation, the herbaceous wetland vegetation has gone dormant. And also to conduct a reassessment of the macroinvertebrate species distribution and provide sampling methods. Um, with the follow-up to be presented at the January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-six meeting. Or earlier meeting at. Request, request of. Uh. Parties, I guess. And it, and, I mean, we could throw something in about routine, continued routine maintenance of erosion controls, but that's just standard requirement, so.
Commissioner Bashman, wasn't there also a discussion of, of location of, uh, where to place the, uh, mucked out basin?
Sure, so, uh. Location of. Mucked out material. Storage on site shall be discussed with project engineer.
Hmm.
Location and means of control. Anything else I forgot?
I don't think so.
This is Commissioner Bodo, can we just? Make a motion to uphold and modifies season correct twenty-five oh five oh two, one seventy-five Cherry Hill. Um, as described by, um, staff. Jamie Frederick at approximately nine thirty-two P, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it's nine thirty. Two to nine thirty-four PM. Is that legit? Can we do that?
I think you could do that or you could continue the show cause hearing to the January twenty-second meeting, whichever you think is more appropriate.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I would like to, cuz we can, we can uphold, uh, yeah. And then have that show cause hearing, you said January what?
I, I would request that the commission continue the show cause hearing as opposed to uphold the season assist order, cuz that may have different ramifications for.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, just to be clear, is, is that a motion on the table or no? Is that hypothetical or a motion?
Uh, I, it can be hypothetical, so we can discuss if that's helpful.
Okay, so I had said previously, I think I, not that the commission wouldn't continue to work with the parties involved, but. Um, I think the best practice, given that we kind of still have a moving target with the updated Rema. Investigation that it would be appropriate to continue the show cause hearing. And we are making a decision, um, and I don't think that that. Puts the commission in any less. Of a position because the motion is. Up, it, it remains in place until the commission makes a decision, so it's still in place. And that's why I was saying, given the fact that we're creating targets here. I think it's important that we have a formal letter documenting those targets and expectations that are expected for. Follow-up at the January twenty-second meeting, um, so. I don't think the commission needs to uphold the order necessarily per se at this point because there's still kind of. This investig- this figuring out stage of, of kind of what the final expectation is going to be, if that makes any sense.
Uh, this is Commissioner Bodo a little bit, I'm, I'm not, I'm not. Totally clear and, and maybe Attorney Lee can speak just briefly for educational purposes about why it would be. Preferential to keep the show cause hearing open versus a, uh, I mean. You know, from, from this chair right here, it's six of this, half dozen of the other, but clearly for you, there's, one is preferential and I, I would. Like to understand why.
Sure, well, you certainly know more about microvertebrates than, than I do, so, uh, but in terms of. The, the request I had made was that the commission continue it because if you continue it, you're not necessarily making a finding, you're continuing it to allow us to. Either provide additional information or, or make. Site improvements that would satisfy the, the requirements in the cease and assist order. If the commission were to uphold the cease and assist order, you're making a legal finding that the. Orders, that my client was in violation and that he's in violation of the orders and he is ordered to cease. Uh, any activity out there, um, and that would be a, kind of an appealable final decision of the commission. So from my perspective, I would prefer that the commission continue the matter to the June, pardon me, to the January. Twenty-second meeting with the understanding that we're gonna accomplish the things that were itemized by Jamie, uh. You know, the removal of the sediment in the low flow times, George Logan's inspection of the property. Um, and, and deal with the location of the mucking, um, without it be- becoming a finding of the commission that my client was in. Violation of his permit and, um, a cease and assist order going into effect.
Thank you.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I think it's clearer too for the commission in the sense that if you uphold the order now and then you get that report. And then there's something else you want them to do, you've already upheld the order. And once the order is upheld, there's really not going back and modifying it, so that's why I would suggest. Keeping it, keeping it open, um, and it still keeps the order in place, it's still effective. Um, and if for whatever reason, January twenty-second, we don't hear from them, we never get the report, then at that point you could decide to. To move forward based on that circumstance. And or if you get the report and there's clear direction, then you could move forward with that decision.
This is Commissioner Bagamar, Jamie, did you want on your list also that you were expecting that you wanted to know a date or when they are going to? Do the, the basin work with the filter?
Uh, well, they, they've already mentioned that they're kind of in the works and I understand that they're somewhat tied by, uh, uh. What the weather conditions are, um. We, I think that could just be. A request and that we receive updates on progress of the, the ba- the basin work and we'll make sure knowing that they're. Looking to gear up, start up that work, that we're going out there regularly to see how things are.
Uh, we need it, this is Commissioner Bashman, we need a motion to continue the show cause hearing for season correct twenty-five oh five oh two.
I think you could just continue it to, I think you'd state, state that it's being continued to January twenty-second.
Season correct twenty-five oh five oh two is going to be continued. Uh, as a show cause hearing until January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-six. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
And I'll get that letter out next week.
And Bruno, thank you. We have no other business. Uh, anything surprising on the agent approvals, Jamie, that you did?
Um, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, so, um. One twenty-five Thimbaland Land Road, we talked about, nothing special there, one twenty-five Northford Road, I haven't actually approved yet, but I plan to approve it. Um, I did get a revised plan, they're basically putting a pool back where there was a pool previously, I just haven't had the ability to process it.
Okay. A- anybody looking to make a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
I'm moving, thank you, enjoy your time in Alberta.
Thank you, bye.
Don't hurry back.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, good night.